Good evening and welcome to the City of West Covina Council Meeting. First, we will begin our meeting with the invocation led by Pastor Mary Minor with Murph Chapel AME Church, led by the Pledge of Allegiance by Mayor Protam Hurford. Please rise.
Dear God, we pray for all who are gathered in this place. The elected officials whom you have elevated to govern the people and to oversee the affairs of this city. The business owners and residents whom you have allowed to operate and dwell in this city. Grant them a vision for this city. A city of justice where none will prey on others. A city of plenty where poverty will be eliminated and wealth will be shared. A city of brotherhood and sisterhood where all success will be founded on service and diversity. A city of peace where order will not rest on force and harassment but on love and respect of all people. Here are the silent prayers of our hearts as we pledge our time and talent and strength and thoughts to speed the day of this city's coming beauty and existence. As the Order of Business is conducted this evening, allow us to respectfully reason with one another and to be on one accord. This we pray. Amen.
Please join with me in our pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, roll call, please. Mayor Sanderson here. Mayor Protam Hurford?
Here.
Councilmember Hernandez. Councilmember Lane?
Here.
Councilmember Toohey?
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Hernandez contacted the City Hall and said he will not be able to attend this evening. He has a personal matter. So with that, Mr. City Manager reporting out from closed session.
Yes, Attorney. Madam Mayor, there was no quorum of councilmembers present for closed session, so there was no closed session that occurred. And I have nothing to report.
Okay, thank you. Mr. City Manager, changes to the agenda?
Yes, we do have an item pertaining to E1, which is a cell tower. And I'm going to have the attorney respond on this matter because I understand that there has been a withdrawal of the appeal. So he'll explain the process.
Thank you, Mr. Pazment. This item, from what I understand, staff have been advised that the appellant who filed an appeal of the Planning Commission decision on this item has indicated his intention to withdraw the appeal, which ordinarily one would expect that would dispose of the appeal before this body and would basically be a resolution of the issues. However, under the city's municipal code, the matter would still be pending even though there is an appeal that had been withdrawn. And so the council would, still needs to take some action on this item. The options the council has is to, as staff are recommending, to refer the matter back to the Planning Commission. The council can do that without holding a public hearing on the item. That would vest the matter back to the Planning Commission for further action. Or if the council is so inclined, because the matter has been noticed for a public hearing, the council could entertain a public hearing tonight and actually take further action on the matter. Because the appeal has been withdrawn, staff have recommended that the council direct the matter back to the Planning Commission and not entertain a public hearing tonight.
Okay, thank you for that report. Since there is a withdrawal, Councilmember Toohey?
I need to make sure, since you're discussing it, I need to make sure I state for the record, if you're going to hear the item, I need to leave the room. Since you're talking about it, I want to make sure I'm in full compliance with the conflict of interest laws. My family over on my dairy at 551 East Fine Avenue has had a cellphone tower there for 20 years. Even though it's leased to American Tower, I have, I will abstain from participating in something that has a financial interest, even though that has nothing to do with me. But I do have cellphone operators on my cellphone tower, and I will abstain and leave the room when it comes up if it is being heard tonight, since you have discussed it.
Thank you, Councilmember Toohey. It's council's pleasure, since there was a withdrawal to appeal, if we could entertain a motion to refer this back to the planning.
If you're doing anything, that's why I'm saying if you're going to hear that item now, I need to leave now if that's what you're going to do.
Is that correct, Mr. City Attorney?
That's correct.
Okay. Their motion to refer this back to planning?
Madam Mayor, since I believe the appellant has pulled the appeal, that this should be referred back to Planning Commission for further study. And at that point, the residents can give input on whatever the discussion is on it.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay. 3-0. So for clarification, item E1, which is the conditional use permit, will be being seen by our Planning Commission. Councilmember Toohey? Okay, and at this time, I have presentations. I'll come forward. It will be coming back to Planning Commission for them to discuss an alternative. Mr. City Manager?
I understand from Mr. Anderson that he will resend out a notice once a date is established for that hearing again, or?
That's correct. It'll be mailed to the same group that was mailed to, the Planning Commission, the City Council's meeting tonight.
Next on the agenda, we have our proclamations. This is Fire Prevention Week, and I will briefly go into something that happened to me recently. We had a fire, and I've never seen a fire in that capacity in my life. It was very, very scary. And alls I can say is thank goodness for our fire department for being there and doing what they did to distinguish that fire. If that didn't happen, animals and people could have been injured or killed. It's a scary thing. So I would like to call forward Fire Chief Paul Sagala to talk a little bit more about fire prevention. And I just wanted to publicly thank you and the department for everything for helping us out that day.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to make sure it was ours.
Yes.
All right. We are here tonight because of the proclamation for the city for Fire Prevention Week. And as you know, thank you to the mayor and the city council, our West Covina firefighters are there for you each and every day, and as you know, act courageously in that capacity. And what you should know is that we take great pride, and it's one of our very important parts of our job is preventing a fire. And the West Covina Fire Department is proud this year to partner with the National Fire Protection Association in promoting smoke alarms, a sound you can live with, as the theme for this week's Fire Prevention Week, October 3 through October 9. Many homes in West Covina may not have smoke alarms, not enough smoke alarms, alarms that are too old, or alarms that are not working. We want residents to understand that working smoke alarms are needed in every home, on every level outside each sleeping area, and inside each bedroom. And if a smoke alarm is 10 years old or older, it needs to be replaced. Smoke alarms can mean the difference between life and death in a fire. Statistics show working smoke detectors cut the chance of dying in a fire nearly in half. Many homes have smoke alarms that aren't working or maintained properly, usually because of missing, disconnected, or dead batteries. Almost 2,000 home fire deaths each year result from fires in homes with no smoke alarms or no working smoke alarms. Most people have a sense of complacency about a smoke alarm because they have them in their home, and they feel that they're safe because of that. But the reality is, they need to be tested and they need to be maintained in order to be working properly. And so this year, this provides us, Fire Prevention Week provides us an excellent opportunity to re-educate the public and to help make our community a little safer.
Thank you so much for that. And on behalf of the citizens of West Covina and the city council, we'd like to give you the proclamation for Fire Prevention Week, October 3 through 9, 2010. Thank you again so much for all you do for the community.
Madam Mayor, with Councilmember Hernandez not present, I'm not sure if you wanted to act on his two items either.
Okay, can we handle that under the, oh, well, yeah, there's, oh, that's right. There may be people here that are on the items. Council's pleasure on the, Councilmember Hernandez is not here tonight, and he had two items on the agenda. Would you like to bring that back at the next council meeting? Councilmember Toohey?
I have no idea. I have no problem going forward on at least one of them because I have no problem bringing Prop 23 back to the next agenda, but asking us to support it, just so people know what Prop 23 is. It's an issue on the November ballot, but it's about the new environmental laws that only apply to certain types of industries. And to me, it's a job killer. It's going to hold off on the, the brand-new air quality laws that are to go into effect. And to me, it kills it. And the Prop 23 will make it so once unemployment goes down to a certain percentage, then it will allow the, the issue to go forward, the new environmental rule. But to me, it is a job killer, and it really doesn't apply to state government as always. Normally, when the state approves something, they exempt state government and state employees from it. So I don't mind bringing it back at the next council meeting, but I am, would ask for it to come back even under my name, since it's on the agenda, to support Prop 23.
Okay. Council's pleasure on that item. We can see that at the end. If you want to go ahead and vote to bring it back?
Aye, fine.
We can do that. And then the other item, which was I2, since he's not here, we can hold that over, sub to the council.
Make a motion, hold over.
Okay, motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now we'll continue with the rest of the agenda, which we will begin with oral communications. At this time, we have a five-minute speaking limit, and I will call you forward. There's yellow cards at the top of the stairs. Our first speaker is Mr. John Schumaker.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Council. Just wanted to make some comments. Over the last few years, we've had people who have gotten up here continuously talking about the dishonesty of our city council. You know, if it wasn't one thing or another, you guys were on the take, you were crooks, or this, or that, and on, and on, and on. And what I thought was really funny is when I opened the paper the other day, was that some of the people who were involved in calling you guys crooks, they're the crooks. They got fined $6,000 for not being able to report the financing of the yes-on-D measure. You know, one of the people who has gotten up here and, you know, knocked you guys for being dishonest, said, "Well, I'm not an accountant, you know, so, you know, I'm going to make mistakes." I thought it was kind of funny when I thought of who was on the no-on-D committee. You know, you have Herb Redholtz, who is the chair. He's never run a political campaign. You have Cookie Nance. She's never been involved in a political campaign, and somehow, they got it right. You know, so I just wanted to say, you know, that maybe, you know, I just thought it was kind of ironic that the people who have, you know, over the years called you guys the crooks, you know, and made big shows of it, turned out to be, well, not necessarily quite as honest as they portrayed themselves to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mr. Herb Redholtz.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council, staff, and the folks. I have a couple of items I want to touch on, one of which I would like, if perhaps you could request Shannon to give us an update on the roadwork that's been going on since April, mainly in my area, the southern end of the city. The roads are being torn up to install the, the new irrigation lines for, to water our lawns and so forth, which, you know, is necessary and needs to be done. However, the, the same areas, the same parts of the streets seem to be continually broken up, opened up, sealed up, broken up, opened up, sealed up, time and time again. I specifically refer to Amar Road between Azusa Avenue and, and Shadow Oak Drive, and also Azusa Avenue between Amar and Giambi Lane, right by the Home Depot. The, the streets are very rough. They're uneven. They're difficult to maneuver and drive on. And perhaps he could update us and give us an estimate as to when this work might be completed. And I've also spoken to him regarding the synchronization of the traffic lights, which really are not well synchronized right now. That's number one. Number two, Councilmember Hernandez has a "Mother May I" item tonight regarding Proposition 23. I would suggest that this council tonight add a "Mother May I" to the agenda for Proposition 22, which, if it is passed, would prohibit the state from coming in and raiding our redevelopment money, our transit money, our public safety money. It would put a stop to that. And I think that this city and every other city in California ought to be on the bandwagon in a very active manner to promote the passage of Proposition 22. It would stop the state from stealing our money. So it would take a "Mother May I" to get it on there so it could be heard in time for action before the election. But I would strongly encourage the council to act on Proposition 22. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Frederick Sykes.
Good evening, City Council, City Staff, members of the audience. I'm Frederick Sykes, President of West Covina. I'm revisiting a subject that I've talked about numerous times, and I'm here again because it's important. I am concerned about what the children at Gianno have to go to, have to endure, have to go through. It's, it's a shame that we have this monument of dense graffiti over this campus. It's just unreasonable, and we give a willful blind eye. I'm here because I know that individually, you guys, elected officials, you have power. You have power to solve the problem individually, if that was a will. And then collectively, there's absolutely no doubt that if you really wanted to solve this problem, it could be taken care of without much hassle. This has been here for four years over these children, and it's broadcasting gang and criminal information over the campus, and it's giving the same message that's projected into the community. It devalues the property, and it diminishes, diminishes the quality of life. Perhaps a, councilmembers need a field trip, because I know that it's eight miles away from here, it's to the south, and that's somewhat out of your comfort zone. But perhaps for the children, you could consider taking a look, a personal, up-close look, to see what these children have to endure. They are making progress. They, they have a portion of the school that have laptops now, that come and go with the laptops. So they're, they're progressing. But somehow, we can get the computers there, but we haven't been able to eradicate something as minor as graffiti, and we pay $15,000 a month for it. It's just a shame. Now, the towers, it was removed from the agenda tonight, and it's unfortunate that as a council, we are somewhat overlooking what's happening to the, to the community because of the money factor. The city's, it's just ever-growing with 60-foot towers. These towers displays natural vegetation, our oxygen-producing machines, just the natural things that help us breathe, been with us throughout time. Perhaps we should think about a moratorium so we can rethink our guidelines. Our council has been giving variances which increase the distance, which increase the density. And right now, we have a half-mile distance that, when we give these variances, that overrules that half-mile distance between the towers. And again, I want to reiterate, the city should please consider a citywide master plan for the cell tower placement. And we should, in the approach, we should put some mitigation for the residents, because they're being overlooked, especially when you realize that there's, when these towers go in nearby their homes, there's a 10% to 20% drop in the value of the property. So just some things for you to think about. And again, please, if you can, take a field trip down to the Gianno Intermediate School. You guys have the power to do it. Now, I'm just hoping that you guys just get the will, because it can be done. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Yahtzee, I want a quick question. I know I looked at that Gianno site many years ago, as well as this council has, and it's not within our parameter. Been down there quite a bit. Go to the Target down there. It's nice. Shop down there. My question to you is, is a lot of the issues were on school property, is what I remember, and we have to get permission for that. Do you, I know it's not on the agenda, and we can briefly discuss it, but I do recall that being one of the big issues, that it wasn't even something on our property.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Councilmember Toohey?
It goes beyond that. What Fred Sykes is asking us to do, to actually go into county jurisdiction, that's outside the city of West Covina, and do someone who he supported when we had the graffiti contract up, they were pushing for urban graffiti, who is the contractor for the county area down there. And they want our contractor, who were painted to West Covina property, to paint the county contractor's work. I understand they may see it, and I am, I'm appalled at it. But I think the thing rests with urban graffiti was the last-known contractor that I'm aware of, Juan Reynoso. And he may not be the current graffiti operator, but the county has stated, Edison has stated, it's outside the jurisdiction if you're talking about the wall that you've been talking about for the last five years. And there's, there is a question there, and there's no question there is graffiti there. But I want to make sure we have limited resources in West Covina. We should send it, or spend it on our residents in our jurisdiction, instead of doing the county's job when they're not doing it.
Okay. I don't know if you have a brief comment, Mr. Yahtzee, just because I know we have tried to deal with that issue.
I did meet with Chris Freeland and the Police Department and the county representatives several times, especially at that, what we call the Great Wall area. And the county finally did take the responsibility that it was their area and that it was not within our city or our contract. I think the school falls into the same area, but I, I didn't meet specifically on that. I'm not sure if our police department has better information on that, but my understanding, it was in the county areas.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Sykes, I see you have your hand up. I just recommend, maybe would you contact Mr. Yahtzee or Mr. Pazment at some point, and you guys can, you know, you can get more information that way. Because I do understand your concern. We're all, we don't like it. Matter of fact, I got off Sunset tonight, and there was some graffiti. Mr. Pazment, do you have a?
Yeah, I was just going to add that I know we had met with the Police Department and the, the school district police chief and the principal for that school as well. I know they had a plan for that issue. They had spoken to the property owner that butts that fence line. They were looking at some options, but I'd probably need to get the council an update on that to find out whatever happened with that as well.
Right, very well. Because it's, you know, we don't want the community to think that we don't care, because we do, absolutely.
I can answer.
Well, you're going to come up here, so do you want to talk when you come up?
Yeah, I'll, I'll.
Okay, well, I'm going in the order. So next speaker is Mr. Chuck McCain. Chuck McCain? Yes. I have you under oral communications, right? Okay.
My name's Chuck McCain. It's my understanding, I'm bringing this up because it's my understanding that if I don't bring this up and it's brought up later on, that this appeal and this gate issue that we're talking about could all be tossed out, and we have to start all over again. I don't understand completely the political process and, and all of the rules and so forth, but, and I've talked to the city clerk assistants, but city, city-county court assistants, I think it is. Anyways, but we didn't get down to the final end of this, but I believe the appearance of fairness doctrine has been violated. And I request the mayor of West Covina to seek help from the city attorney if necessary. The reason why, on September 7, during the public discussion concerning the appeal of West Covina's Planning Commission to deny the property owner a 318 Great Mountain Drive approval to gate a West Covina street, Councilman Roger Hernandez appeared to show a lack of respect, texting during the presentation, and was so disinterested in knowing what the fellow councilmembers thought, attempted to bring it up to a vote immediately prior to discussing it with fellow councilmembers. But the root of all of this is that Roger Hernandez was given money from the applicant a week prior to the applicant bringing this appeal up, and just prior to him knowing that it had to be voted upon by Roger Hernandez as a city councilman. And the city clerk, I'd like you to put on record information that I received from the LA County Office of Assessors showing who the owners of the property is. And the owner of the property is U.S. Presidential Investments, and this is the election track showing that they gave money to Roger Hernandez on August 25. And that is it.
Okay, thank you. How our rules work, when oral communications come, we can't get really elaborate because it's not agendized. But maybe, Mr. City Attorney, you have a brief comment, or something can come back. I don't know how you would want to work that.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. It seems like this, these comments are pertaining to item C1 on the agenda rather than the general oral communication section. So when item C1 comes up?
You can.
We can address those questions then.
All right. Perfect. Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Mr. Alfred Williams.
Good afternoon, Mayor Sanderson, Mr. Toohey, Mr. Hurford, and Slang. I'm a resident of West Covina. I thought the RACOS were gone and no longer a problem within the city, but it seems that they seem to come back. Now, somebody is saying that if you get a parking ticket, then you're a criminal. If you fill out your income tax wrong, you are a criminal. It seems tonight, because they read an article in the San Gabriel Tribune that says a group got fined, that they are criminals. Our 460 form, just like your 460 form, reflected who we got contributions for. If you don't want to believe ours, then I would say, don't believe what you councilman put on your 460 form. The FPPC came back and said, yes, you did make a mistake. You did make some mistakes. And I have to admit, I helped make some of those mistakes, okay? But the FPPC also said there was nothing blatant. We didn't try to. We didn't try to deceive anybody. We didn't try to do anything that was deceptive. They were honest mistakes. Just like you run a red light, you may not intend it, but if the policeman is there, and he catches you, you get a ticket. You pay a fine. So, this muckraking that you're doing, and what has come up tonight, needs to stop. We have stopped it. But it seems that somebody thinks that this is a good thing, to keep bringing it up over and over and over again. It is not a good thing. Let's get together and try what's best for Wes Covina, and stop this, as I can't find a better word for it, BS. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mr. Lloyd Johnson.
Tonight, I am here, along with myself, Lynn Kennedy, George Augen, and Rob Satello, on the Veterans Memorial Committee. We would like to say thank you to Chris Freeland, Michelle McNeil, and Shannon Yatsi for all their help in finding a placement for the veteran memorial. We had a great meeting. When it was over, we all agreed on the concept and the placement of the wall. I know this council will agree with us. This is going to be a great tribute to our veterans who paid the ultimate price for all they did for our great country. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. And next speaker is Mr. Glenn Kennedy.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council, city staff. I was also going to speak on D-5. If you had any questions about the memorial wall, I'd be more than happy to answer them. We love the design. Thank you, George. George came up with it, along with Michelle, because my wall was only going to be a six-footer and pretty plain, but the concept that they came up with is really, really nice, and I'm very proud to be part of it. And so, getting with that, let me tell you a few things about the graffiti, since I run the volunteer graffiti program. The point that Mr. Sykes is talking about is, at the school, there's a hill, and on the hill, there's a fence. Well, it's a double fence. You've got the school fence, and you've got the resident fence. And the lady there has put these, like, doors up there, you know, like closet doors, the old ones. And the kids go up there and tag. Now, this has been an issue, and Mr. Sykes is right, this has been an issue for a long time. Now, I met with Chief Rinal, and he said he was going to handle it a year and a half ago. And it's still there, right? I mean, this was supposed to be handled by the Roland Police. They told me I was not allowed on the school. It was Roland School District. I had to go, I couldn't go on the weekends, I had to have permission. And so, they said, we'll handle it. If we need you, we'll call you. But we have our contractor, which at the time was Juan Reynoso. So, other than that, I can't go on the school. And the other, the other wall, the Great Wall, we call the Great Wall, that runs between Kimberly and Temple there, that is badly graffitied. And however, that easement, if you walk down it, there's telephone poles. And the telephone poles are the boundary lines. It's in our maps, and it would cost the city, I think, $75,000 to survey it. So, but in our map, that is the boundary line. So, that wall, which is maybe 10 feet to the right, that's all county. Now, everything on the other side is all us. And it should have been done years ago. But that wall, we're not touching it. That's up to the county contractor, which is also Juan Reynoso. Thank you. If you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them. No?
I think we're good. Thank you for your time. That is all the speaker cards I have at this time. So, Mayor Protem Herford.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Since the topic of Measure D's come up tonight, I want to make a few comments on it. You know, with what we've seen in the city of Bell over the last four or five months, we realized very quickly that elections do matter. And the problems in Bell started with an election a few years ago to bring their city to a charter city, which led to raising salaries of the elected officials, and subsequently, the city staff and everybody basically bleeding the residents of Bell dry. So, elections do matter. And when we have elections, they need to be fair elections. They don't need to be run by shoddy committees that either don't do paperwork or don't disclose things, but they need to be run by honest committees, and that's where the Fair Political Practices Commission comes into play. The problem I have is not so much with the paperwork issue. Sure, everybody can make mistakes with paperwork, but the concerned citizens for all of Wes Covina has never reported all of the contributions that they've received. And I've said it numerous times here at the dais, the money is what is important in an election, and we need to know where the money comes from. And the FPPC seems to rule that you can run an election on a credit card. If that is the rule of law, then elections can be corrupted very easily. All you do is have a big developer come into a city, put a lot of money down, and do it through a campaign consultant, and nobody ever knows where the money comes from. So, I still think there's issues with Measure D and the way that that was put before the voters, but it is very important for people to understand that elections do count, and you need to be educated, because what happened in the city of Bell can happen to any community when people don't participate.
Councilmember Tui.
I'm not going to comment on Measure D. My comment, in the last election, there was a whole nother committee that mailed filthy stuff out on me. They still haven't even formed a committee. No one's admitted where the works come from, but they left certain fingerprints that left, who did the printing? Who did the mailing is no one. But no one knows who actually funded it, because they stole someone else's ID, but put the wrong, stole someone else's name, but put the wrong address on. And the person happens to be the district attorney's campaign consultant, who they stole his identity. That wasn't probably a good move to do. But that's, that's just me. I wouldn't steal the DA's campaign consultant's ID. He has told our city clerk that he was not involved in anything to do in Wes Covina, but someone spent 30, 20 or $30,000, and it's never been reported different than them. I understand you're saying it was a mistake. This one, someone spent 20 or 30, and it just happens to be consultants that are tied to certain people running for higher office, and people that use similar consultants and printers for all their mailers. Doesn't mean anything by that, because that can be an innocent mistake, but I'm saying the print house in Pasadena and mailing service in City of Industry that actually did it are known. We just don't know yet, and the DA may know yet, or may know, but I mean, this has been done before, and the DA has done these type of investigations, because you normally go after the print house and the mailhouse, and you threaten to put them in prison. That's what happened in Southgate. And that's when Albert Robles was prosecuted, when he said a guy was a child molester, made up a fake photo of him being arrested, and published it through some schemes, using, trying to shield where it came from. So, it is important for the public to know where everyone gets the money from and who's paying for it. That's fair, no matter what. And like I said, it was done against us, all three of the candidates that were up. And none of that money, we're not even talking about that. The issue you're hearing about today from both sides, that's not even that issue. This is another issue, on a fake group, which did a whole bunch of mailers against us, and no one has to report it. And it is a matter of concern. I know Chuck brought up the thing. I'm making sure on the next issue, I did get no campaign donations from that group ever, the group that you're referring to, either side, ever. But we need to watch that. On the graffiti issue, I'm telling you, if we have, we need to go back to Gloria Molina, and I think Valerie Hill retired from handling the graffiti contract for the county, but we need to go after the county to do their job. And I want to make sure, I know Fred, and I understand your concern, that the kids have to see it. Roland Unified School District is a state agency outside of our jurisdiction. If it's their, kids are seeing it. The Roland Unified School Police, the Roland Unified School Board should take care of a problem, since our graffiti volunteer is not allowed to take care of it. And to me, it should be taken care of by the contractor. If we're going to start doing all the county services for the county, you better plan on having your taxes raised up considerably. We can't take on the county responsibilities. And that, this was brought up, and that is my concern. And we are continuing on the fight on this. The same thing happened in the city of Monterey Park. The council member there put up a reward, and if you've seen, three people were arrested in Monterey Park on doing these fake campaign mailers, where someone did pay, and it was not reported. And they arrested a former councilwoman, and the mailhouse operator the same way, and the printer, so. Those are, I agree, I'm concerned too, this, like Steve said, it's a matter of fairness. The people mentioned, you have the ability to come check our forms and see where, who gave us money, who did, and good, bad, or indifferent. At least you know. And to me, that's fairness, so you know, and you can reach your own decision. When some of this does a secret $30,000 donation, and it's all from consultants in Sacramento, that would concern me.
Mayor Protem Herford.
To carry that one step further, I would like to have us take a position on this. And so, could we have brought back, a mother may I, from me, to write the FPPC and object to a campaign being run on a credit card?
Okay.
In so many words, in essence, without anybody reporting, so not just a credit card, but through a campaign consultant.
If there's no other comments, we'll go on to our next item on the agenda, which is Item C1. Items carried over from previous council meeting, public hearing. This public hearing was continued from the September 7th, 2010, regular meeting, and consists of an appeal decision by the Planning Commission to deny Planning Director's modification 1020, allow install of vehicle security gates at 318 Great Mountain Drive. The public hearing on the appeal of the Planning Commission decision on Planning Director's modification 1020 is still open. First, we will have the presentation of a staff report, and then we shall hear from those in favor of the appeal, and then from those opposed. Finally, those in favor will have the opportunity to give rebuttal to any testimony in opposition. Mr. City Manager, who will present the staff report?
I'm first going to have the deputy city attorney make some comments, and I'll refer it over to Mr. Anderson, following the attorney's comments.
Thank you. Yes, very briefly, Madam Mayor, members of the council, just so the record is clear, Mayor Protem Herford was on at the last hearing on this item. However, the record should reflect that Mayor Protem Herford has been provided the full record of all the proceedings from the last hearing. I used to have the opportunity to view the entire testimony and all their documents and all the other materials for that, the last hearing on this matter. So, Mayor Protem Herford is fully able and permitted and authorized to participate in this matter tonight. Just want to make that clear for the record.
Thank you very much.
This item was continued from the September 7th council meeting. The applicant is Bangomer Construction, requesting approval to install vehicular security gates on Great Mountain Drive, which is a private road that serves five houses on Virginia between Boranka and Grand, and the area is behind me. The Planning Department reviews proposals to install security gates for existing and new residential developments with the help of Public Works and Fire Department. In 1990, the Planning Commission established standards for the installation of security gates. Those are in your report on your attachment three. The applicant submitted two letters, attachments one and two, discussing their reasons for wanting the gate. Those reasons were covered last time, and they're also in the report, if you'd like to refer to those. The Planning Commission considered this proposal on July 13th. At the conclusion of that meeting, they requested that staff review the approval, the original approvals of the development. The item was reviewed again on July 27th, and staff review found no indication or discussion regarding security gates, the original approvals. After that discussion, the Planning Commission voted four to zero to deny the request, stating that the Great Mountain, that Great Mountain Drive was no different than other cul-de-sacs, that the security gates could create security hazards, because vehicles would have to back onto Virginia, and that the gates are very close to neighboring houses. The applicant has submitted a revised proposal, and I'll take one moment to describe what's behind me here. This is the original location of the gates. This is Virginia Avenue. And they're now proposing the gate in this location, in front of the first house on Virginia, with a little knockout for a turnaround and a parking space here. So, the revised plan would place the security gate about 240 feet south of Virginia Avenue. This is a close-up of that plan. There would be a turnaround, which would be located in this location, and there would be a parking space, guest parking space here, for guests who couldn't get in the gate, and who would need to use an intercom system to access the gate. And that's what the gate would look like, which is pretty much the same slide you saw last time. The revised location would reduce noise impacts to the houses because of the distance of the proposed, the revised gate to the houses. The original proposal did not comply with two of the security gate standards, one requiring a turnaround in front of the gate, and two requiring guest parking spaces outside of the gate. The revised proposal does comply with those standards. Staff is therefore now recommending approval of the security gates with the standards that are attached as, or I'm sorry, the conditions of approval that are attached as Attachment 11. Alternatively, similar to the earlier public hearing that was scheduled, this could be sent back to the Planning Commission for review, since they didn't have the opportunity to review the revised gates. That concludes staff's presentation. Be happy to answer questions this time.
Any questions of staff, by council? Okay. Seeing none, we will have the speakers in favor. First speaker is Al Benegas.
Good evening, Mayor, council. As you heard from the Planning Department, we now meet the city standards for private gate. And I just would like to, again, encourage you guys to do the right decision on here to protect these homes. These neighbors have the same right as any other neighbor on or in the city of Wes Covina. Actually, the, would everybody who lives on Virginia, please stand right now. These are the residents of Great Mountain, which occupied three homes. Thank you. And I know in the past, there's been a lot of talking of parties going on, but these are the families that live there, and I think these families deserve the same right that every other resident, again, in Wes Covina has. We are willing, and as, again, shown by the slides there, we moved the gate further up to avoid any kind of backing up, any kind of noise, to Paul's house. And basically, I mean, we meet the standards now that were provided to us. So, again, I would encourage you to approve the recommendation from the Planning Department. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions, council? Thank you very much. Now, I have two speaker cards from the residents, and it's putting in support and favor. Am I correct by saying that, Mr. Paul Tomrello? Okay, please come forward.
Wow, 11th hour. Here we go. I wish they would have brought this up earlier, and we wouldn't be here right now. Something, I'm always going to maintain my position as no gate was ever supposed to be put on that. And I'm still doing some investigating right now into that. Apparently, it's not documented anywhere here, but it might be somewhere else, and I have one more place to look. And I believe with all due respect, that option two, since I just found out about it yesterday, or no, Sunday, I was able to meet with the staff and view it. It is better. They did make changes. We don't get impacted as much. But I brought up some issues that Mr. Garcia was able to find about the no-build zone on it. There's actually a easement on the back wall, so it has to be pushed back further and stuff like that. It's just things I want to make sure that if it does happen, that it's right, that it's right, and that they follow. I think there's more than 19 conditions for approval, and I would strongly urge you guys to send it back to the Planning Commission, and let them see it, let them view it. So, give us more time to get more. So give us more time to get more documentation, if it's out there, and more arguments against it, just to make sure that, like I said, if it does happen, it's right, it's correct. Because, you know, the history of the whole project, there was things done that was, you know, there were things done that were said were supposed to be done, and it didn't get done. So I'm here as a resident next to this project to still hold my ground, and hopefully, we could come to some conclusion or some resolution on this. But I do think it should go back to the Planning Commission and start all over again. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Chuck McCain.
I live directly across the street, 3133 East Virginia Avenue. A couple of things. Well, one of them, I want to apologize to the applicant. I stated earlier that the applicant had given money to Roger Hernandez, and that was an error. It's the property owner, the owner of the property, that gave the money to Roger. The applicant is not the owner. I wanted, at the beginning, I guess, to show a couple of pictures that are more three-dimensional in lieu of a drawing that shows where the parking would be. And I've only got two of them here. Perhaps you could just kind of pass them. But in the resolution, there are two, there are at least two items. I think that were put in there perhaps when we were talking about and having the discussion that gates would never happen. And in the resolution, it says findings necessary for approval. And it's in page two, item F. It says, "The development is sensitive to the natural terrain, minimizes necessary grading, de-emphasizes vertical massing, which could disrupt the profile of a natural slope, and does not impede any scenic vistas or views open to the public or surrounding properties." Putting this gate across the street changes that. It also says that the proposed, under item B, says, "Proposed homes are situated on a private cul-de-sac that is situated apart from Virginia Avenue and Sunset Hill Drive and will not alter or affect the streetscape as visible from those streets." And it's obvious that gate, I'm going to see the rendering that was shown up there. Every day I wake up, walk into the kitchen, and every night before I go to bed. I think the gate, it's halfway there, and I praise the applicant for that. But also, taking a look at it, and if I was as concerned about security as the owner of the property is, I think I would want that gate to where, when I wake up in the morning, I can make sure that it's secured. When I go to bed at night, I could see that gate and make sure it's secured. Where it's at right now, he can't see that. So why not put it on the street where he can see it, not me? I don't care. You know, I'm not going to check his gate, make sure it's secured at night. I've got these other pictures here where he could solve that solution if he wanted Maybe with Jeff Anderson's help, with his pointer, right at the edge of the garage, there, like north and south, if he was to put a gate, a motorized gate, to go right at the edge, very edge of, I think it's 318, the garage, right there, and go north and south, yes, across his driveway, and put a gate there across his driveway so that that person could drive through that motorized gate, and then basically continue on right there and put a gate across that portion. And right at the edge of his driveway, a little bit closer to his driveway, and then the first portion of his driveway, there's like a grassy knoll, let's say, to the north of that driveway, that could be turned to that parking spot for the car. And that would be a lot less, what would you call it? It would be less changed to the landscape that's there at this time. He wouldn't have to do any retaining walls, I don't think. He wouldn't have to put a new driveway in. The applicant, I understand, is a gate fabricator. He would have more gates to make, which should make his shop people happy. And the applicant, when he wakes up in the morning, he could see that gate. He can make sure it's closed. You know, he could make sure it's secured at nighttime. And me, I wouldn't see the gate. I wouldn't see it, wouldn't care. That'd be great. The other thing that this, if he moved it back, it would help. I've always heard that one of the best deterrents against crime is not to be real flashy. You don't want to be walking around with your flashy diamonds on a dark street. A lot of people turn their diamonds toward the inside if they're walking down some leery places. Well, same thing with the gate. You put a gate up there, you're flashy. And, you know, if you want a dark example, I will go to a dark example of that, on Grand and Cameron. Someone was murdered in their home during a home invasion, and they have one of the flashiest gates in West Covina. The home may be LA County right there, but it's right there on the edge of West Covina. That is it. I don't see a problem with that gate. If he wants a gate, make sure that it's secured, make sure that he can see it at night, move it over there where it should be. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no other speaker cards. Did the applicant like to come forward?
Madam Mayor, city council, I'm just very frustrated at this point. We've done everything we can do. Cost-wise, moving the gate to the new location is going to cost my client, if not three times the amount. And I don't think Chuck's ever going to be happy wherever the gate's going to go. He doesn't want to look at it in the morning, he shouldn't look at it. No one was here talking about Paul's house, who has a white picket fence, who needs to get painted, who parks his cars on the lawn. You know, that's not the kind of people they are. We're here for security reason. They got broken into twice. That a stolen car's been left on their property. This has nothing to do with flashiness. It has to do with security. And I'm just really bothered with, you know, their accusations that have gone on every single time they come up here. They don't really make any sense. We've talked to, I personally talked to Jeff and Ron on the 19 conditions, and we're willing to meet every single condition they're giving us. There's really not much more we can do to please the neighbors at this point. I don't think there's anything we can do ever to please the neighbors. The neighbors are upset at this project, which was approved 10 years ago. My client's been the owner for about two years. We have nothing to do with what happened 10 years ago on this project, and I feel that we're being held responsible for that time and time after. So again, I just would encourage you to do the right thing and put closure to this. Neighbors have said that they don't have a problem with the gate. They all want different location, different style. The Planning Department should be the one to determine where this case best fits with the standard that they have given us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. City Attorney, I know there was items brought up earlier by one of the speakers, and you said it would be more appropriate for you to talk about it at that time. Would this be the appropriate time?
Oh, yes, it would, Madam Mayor. I believe those comments during that, although they were under the oral communications portion of the meeting, just so the record's clear, I believe they do relate to this matter, and so those comments may be considered in your deliberations on this item. This particular item, I guess, item C1. In addition, the documents that have been submitted by that person, both the photos and all the other materials, I believe have been distributed to council, so the record should reflect that the council does have or has seen those documents, and those will be considered part of the record of this proceeding.
Okay. Something was mentioned in reference to a fairness doctrine. I'm not familiar with that, that we should seek the help of an attorney. You are the attorney, so what would you recommend?
Well, Madam Mayor, as I understand it, it had to do with an allegation that one of the council members who was at the last meeting may have had some bias or appearance of bias because of receiving contributions by the property owner. My recommendation with regard to that is it probably doesn't have any weight for purposes of the council decision tonight, because that council member is not present, and so it really is not going to be factoring into the decision that's being made tonight. But the allegation's been made, and it will be preserved for the record.
Okay. I know that there's certain parameters of, you know, within timeframes. I know on the planning as well as council. I don't have the documentation. I don't know if somebody had it in reference to the monies donated and if it exceeded an amount, how that all works so that, you know, we're not in violation, anybody isn't.
Yeah, Madam Mayor. Well, first of all, it would be a separate issue if there were contributions that hadn't been reported correctly. That's really outside the scope of the matter tonight. Also, without the benefit of being able to investigate those documents and evaluate them and basically perform some type of a due diligence evaluation about the allegations that's been made and the veracity of those documents themselves, it really would not be appropriate to comment on that at this point. I mean, the allegation's been made, and if there's some follow-up that would be needed, staff can, you know, perform that outside the scope of this particular item.
Okay. Thank you. With that, if there's no other comments, I need to close the public testimony portion of the hearing and ask for any council discussion. Council discussion? Mayor Protem Herford.
Madam Mayor, let me just state for the record, I did receive the video, or not the audio, of the council meeting, and I did listen to all the testimony from the last council meeting on the public hearing. So, you know, this project, when it came before us 10 years ago, was a very sensitive project. At that time, it was a little bit difficult with the width of the driveway and the number of homes, and it was subsequently approved. I think a lot of us, or some of us on the council, I shouldn't say a lot, because it did get the majority vote, had concerns about this type of development, the number of homes. And when I listened to the tape, I think I originally heard that there was only one home occupied, and then it was changed to three homes being occupied. So it hasn't built out as I think the owner would like it to. I think the gate is probably put in there to hopefully encourage more sales of the properties, probably number one. Couple of questions. The cutout, is that big enough for a fire engine to turn around in one turn?
No, it wouldn't be big enough for a fire engine to turn around. They would be required to have a Knox box to allow fire department access into the cul-de-sac of the private street.
Okay. And there's no code or anything for a visitor to put in there? It's just residents would have a, like a garage door opener type thing. You couldn't go up there and put in a code to go into your house?
That would depend on the technology they wanted to use. We don't restrict that. It could be a remote, like you described, or it could be, it could be a number system. It depends on what they want.
And the right-of-way on that property line that Paul brought up, it doesn't look like there is a right-of-way there, or at least it looks like it's built on a right-of-way. It doesn't have...
In this area?
Yeah, it looks like it's right on the property line.
There's a little bit, I think there's a sidewalk there, it's probably about four feet wide. I think it's a 20...
No, no, between Paul's property and the parking?
Oh, here. No, you're correct. Well... This is the turnaround area, but you're correct. As they've got it designed, there's no space between the edge of his property and the turnaround. It's right there.
Okay. So if you had two cars come in, I guess there's, one of those spaces is a parking space, right?
Correct.
Okay. So, and the other one says no parking all the time?
That's correct.
Okay. So if you had two, if you, let's say you had three cars come in, and the front car didn't have the code, then you'd have a pretty big jam up there.
It could have a jam, you're right.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. Any other comments of council? No? Okay. I will make my comments. I heard from the residents that they appreciated the being pushed back. If we wanted to move forward with that, I believe it should go back to planning to make sure any setbacks, or, I mean, this is a little bit of a, you know, a quick however. I don't, I know how frustrating it is to be going back and forth and back and forth. So, you know, it's the, I drove over there and I noticed the only, I thought about maybe putting that gate back farther, but it kind of goes up a hill, so I didn't know, if you're sitting there on the hill waiting to get in the gate, and I don't know if the gate, I mean, I don't know, we don't think we have any ordinance on it, but the gate monitor or button was on the passenger side. So if there was some kind of a code, would they have to get out? I mean, I don't know. So I have some concerns. So if we move forward, if the council wants to consider this option, as the residents were kind of making sure it gets pushed back far enough where they don't have to be impacted by that, I would support that, but I would also support it going to planning, or no gate at all. So that's my position. And looking for a motion, Council, Mayor Protem Herford.
Well, my position is to deny the gate. I just think it's the wrong, it's the wrong location. It's a safety hazard, in my opinion, if somebody had to turn around quickly, if it was a public safety vehicle. I don't necessarily see the need for it. If you want security, you could gate each one of those houses, that would be the same effect, gate the driveway. So I would, let's see. I'll uphold the decision of the Planning Commission.
Okay. I have a motion to uphold, and I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
No.
Okay. Motion carries. Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Councilmember Tui.
I want to make sure, because this is starting to become a trend here, so if we're going to have rules or standards by the Planning Department for gates to make sure that our city properties have the exact same requirements of parking spaces outside of our city facilities for parking in the exact same turnaround space, so we're just not dictating to private people, and the government does whatever they want. None of our facilities that have gates have turnaround spaces or the parking in front of them, and we have many city facilities that have this exact same thing, and you have to back back onto the street. So this in the future, you should try having policies that are at least mirror. If you're going to require private enterprise to do it, you should try doing it.
Our next item on the agenda is our consent calendar. If there's nothing that needs to be pulled...
Madam Mayor, can we pull the item on the veterans' wall? I think there was a picture they wanted to show us.
Okay.
I'll second everything.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second, although pulling the veterans' memorial wall, which is D5. All in favor of approval of the consent? Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries for the consent. We have some photos and information on our memorial wall. Mr. City Manager?
Sorry, Michelle, you ready?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. I just want to open this report by quickly stating my appreciation to the members that I've been working with on this committee, 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 Glenn Kennedy, Lloyd Johnson, Rob Satello, George Ogden, and who am I missing? Is that it? I think that's it. Anyway, thank you for your comments, gentlemen. It's been our pleasure working with you. So just to recap, at the July 6, 2010, city council meeting, members of the Veterans of Foreign War approached you, requesting your approval to commence on the construction of a memorial wall, specifically in the Civic Center courtyard that would honor West Covina soldiers that have been killed serving our country. On July 20, the city council approved that concept and directed staff to work with the veterans, well, to work with VFW and the American Legion, and try to outline a design, a tentative design for the memorial wall. And once that was concrete, to bring that back to the city council for your review, which is why we're here this evening. So I'd like to review with you the wall. Essentially, you can see it on the screen, but basically, the wall has five, where's my screen? Hold on one second. Can I have a brush? wall has five, where's my screen? Hold on one second. Okay, so this is the memorial. It has five columns. Each column is about two feet in diameter. The width of the entire structure is 20 feet. The height of the entire structure is proposed at six feet. The depth of the structure from the front to the back is six feet. The structure will be placed up against the landscaping so that it doesn't come up here and take up existing grassland. The bronze plaques would be situated in the column, kind of recessed into the column so that they're flat up against each column. There'd be a title across the top that says West Covina Memorial, I'm sorry, West Covina Veterans Memorial. There'd be five lamps on the base of the memorial that would shine upward, illuminating each column. The bronze plaque would include the war, the conflict that the soldier fought in, the name of the soldier, as well as their branch of service, their rank, and their date of death. The base of the memorial would have space to appreciate and recognize the donors who helped make this wall possible. And then along the mow strip here, you might know that over here, if we were to expand this picture out to the left, there is an existing veterans' wall there, which actually honors all veterans of all forces. This wall would be just slightly different, or this memorial, in that it would only recognize West Covina residents, not all residents of the armed forces, I'm sorry, all soldiers of the armed forces. So what they would do is construct a sidewalk that would come up here, meet where the, it would be over here, meet where the veterans' wall exists now, and construct a four-foot concrete sidewalk that would come down in front of the memorial with a concrete pad, and plenty of space for a wheelchair to access and be able to reflect in front of each column so that they could have their own personal experience as they commemorate the names that would be listed on the column there. Also, within this section, either to the, maybe over here, over here, we've been talking about a bench, just where somebody could sit and reflect as well. To date, the VFW has identified 25 soldiers that would qualify for the wall, and they continue to research. You might know that it's a laborious task. Glenn, our chair, community services chair, Glenn Kennedy, has done a lot of work on this. So they'll continue to look for names. The criteria in order for a soldier to have representation on the veterans' memorial wall is that they had to, they had to be killed in what's called a theater of combat, and that's the requisite for having representation on the wall. If the city council approves the location, that being our Civic Center courtyard, and likes the general design that you see, of course, this is just a mock-up, then city staff will coordinate with the VFW and the American Legion a groundbreaking ceremony, as well as continue to work with them on the design and the construction. And then the VFW and American Legion have confirmed with the city that this entire project will be funded through private donors and also through volunteers. So approving this matter before this evening has no impact to the city's general fund. And that concludes my report. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them for you.
Okay, any questions? Councilman Lee?
He had a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Motion to approve.
I just had a quick question. You said date of death. Does that include their birthday too? So somebody would know their age when they passed away?
Well, actually, thanks for the question. I know that the VFW and American Legion have really been trying to figure out exactly what they want, and I don't know that they've made a final decision, but they're here tonight, and I'm sure that they can recognize your comments and consider that for the bronze plaque.
That's what I just, I was curious.
Come forward, representative.
Madam Mayor, City Council, absolutely. Would absolutely put the day they were born and the day they were killed.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mayor Protim Herbert?
I'm sorry, she was still going.
Oh.
I was just going to say, you guys did a great job and staff, and it's beautiful, and thank you for all your hard work and bringing this forward.
Thank you. You thanked George Ogden for his nice design, because my wall looked like the welfare wall.
My only concern is the donors. I prefer not to see the names of the donors on the bottom. I mean, that just is my take on it. This is something that the community should pull together, and I don't particularly like to see, you know, donated by. I think it's a city. Even though it's private donations, I think it's a city.
Well, we can work on that. We were thinking maybe that on the side, we could put like a, you know, like a rock with a plaque on it.
Just a comment from me.
I think they, they should be, the people who donate should be recognized, absolutely. You know, this is a wall built by veterans for veterans, and, you know, we're out there, you know, asking for money, and I think that we should have some type of...
I think the cause is great.
A recognition. You know, I understand that.
That's just my personal...
No, no, but...
You're doing.
Mr. Herbert, I do understand that on the wall, it's for the men and women who were killed in action, and that's it. It's their wall. And another point I wanted to bring up was, that I forgot earlier, is that we could have this on the city website, our wall.
Sure.
And then, you know, I'll work with you on that.
Sure.
Go ahead, George.
Yeah, I just kind of wanted to address this, Steve, just a little bit. What had happened is the consideration for those that may donate a sizable fund is a gentleman came from outside the city in Warren to remember his grandfather, and his grandfather did a lot for veterans before he died. He wanted to make a size, what I feel is a sizable donation in his grandfather's name, who was a World War II veteran. And it didn't necessarily want his name on there, but I believe they were here at the city council meeting at the one time, and we did discuss this. And my own opinion, I just felt that would probably be appropriate, especially when a veteran, after he is gone, is still making consideration for veterans' families that have lost theirs during combat missions while serving our country. So that's why that consideration was put in place. And I really don't want, like, advertising on there. I can see where you're coming from with this. So we have to be careful with the consideration that we would do with those that we do recognize that did help and assist getting this wall in place. Are there any other questions? I'll get Glenn back up here. Okay, thank you very much for your consideration. Appreciate it.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor. I'd like to say, good design. It brings richness to this area. I do really like it, and I like the walkway. Maybe something that can be, you know, considered is like, certain places have bricks, you know, like a stones on the floor. So I don't know, and people donate or whatever. I know you want to keep it kind of...
Classy?
Yeah, classy, so you don't want it to... Thanks for helping me with my vocabulary. So I think it's a great idea. I think it looks great, and thank you for bringing it. And so I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
I don't know if we had a second. I'll second it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Okay, there you are. Next item on the agenda is item E2. We have another public hearing, amendments to the fiscal year 2010-2011 Community Development Block Grant Action Plan. The matter is set for a public hearing. It's the consideration of proposed amendments to the fiscal year 2010-2011 CDBG Action Plan. The city clerk, verify the proper legal notice has been given.
Yes, it's verified.
Thank you very much. And at this time, I shall open the public hearing on the proposed amendments for the fiscal year 2010-2011 CDBG Action Plan. First, we'll have a presentation of the staff report, and then we'll hear comments from the public. Mr. Pasment, who will present the staff report?
Mr. McDonald will do that report.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Is this, this on? Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. This report concerns 18 amendments to the 2010-2011 CDBG Action Plan. They're detailed in attachment number one, because the approval of the action plan generally precedes the adoption of the budget in any given year. Subsequent action plan amendments are typically needed to make the two documents consistent, and that's in large part the reason for this public hearing. Amendments number one through 16 concern activities and funding included in the city's adopted 10-11 budget. They were previously acted upon by the council but need to be formally included in the action plan. Approval of these amendments doesn't require any additional appropriation. Amendment number 17, the construction of a storage room at the senior center was approved as part of the 10-11 capital improvement budget for $50,000. However, based on recent construction estimates, an additional $10,000 is necessary to complete the project, bringing that project to a proposed total of $60,000. Amendment number 18, the replacement of the bridge at Cortez is a new project with an estimated cost of $30,000. There is no general fund impact resulting from this report. There are sufficient CDBG funds available to cover the additional cost of these amendments. Therefore, staff recommends that the city council approve the proposed amendments to the 2010-2011 CDBG Action Plan is detailed in attachment number one, and appropriate $40,000 to implement the proposed amendments. That concludes my report.
Yes, any questions? Mayor Protim Herbert?
Kelly, how big is a storage room? I mean, that seems like a lot of money.
I'm sorry, not sure, certain of the square footage.
The existing storage room at the senior center is used for not only some of the kitchen equipment that can't stay in the kitchen walkway, but also for all the food supplies. And in order to feed 150 people a day with fresh food, it requires a lot of delivery from Cisco. So the existing space that we have, even our nutrition specialist has recommended that we consider looking at some kind of expansion so that we can do this. We looked at it a few different ways. In fact, the first quote that we had, the reason we have to ask for an increase, and we worked with Public Works on it, but as they continued to look at it, they found that we probably needed to do a little bit more than we had recommended. We were going to do it as cheap as we could, but they thought, you know, if this needs to be a long-term thing, we probably should do it right and put the extra money into it. And so they came back with a little bit higher cost than we had planned, but it would provide for better air conditioning, better airflow through the dry food storage area, and definitely give us the space that we need right now.
So how big is the addition?
Gosh, I'm so sorry. I don't know the square footage. I can get it for you, and I'd be happy to put it in a weekly or communicate to the city manager. I'm sorry, I don't have that.
Okay, and then the bridge, is it really that bad?
Yeah, the current bridge is made out of timbers, and they're totally eaten by termites and dry-rotted. We've actually had to do some patching on it to keep it from falling over. And we're going to, the cost is a little more initially on this replacement because we're looking at going to either a concrete or composite design, similar to Heritage Park, something that would be low maintenance and last much longer than the wood.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions?
Motion to approve.
Okay, first I have to, I don't have any cards, so I need to close the public comment portion of the hearing and...
Motion to approve then.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is item E3, which is the public, another public hearing for weed abatement, 2010, various locations. This is the time and place set for the hearing, protests or objections against the abatement of weeds growing up upon removal of rubbish upon certain streets and private property in the city of West Covina, as described in the resolution 2010-48. Madam City Clerk, do you have the affidavit mailing relative to this hearing required by law?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. May we have a motion to receive and file of the affidavit of mailing? It looks like I need a motion.
So moved.
A motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Pasment, who will present the staff report?
Mr. Chief Segala will be here.
Thank you.
Good evening once again, mayors Anderson and members of the city council. As you heard earlier tonight, fire prevention is a very important part of our overall community safety strategy, and in this consideration, we're looking at the wildfire prevention part of what our business is. I would like to present Fire Protection Specialist Jason Brierley, who is our subject matter specialist.
Madam Mayor, city council members, for you tonight, annual weed abatement program. This program consists of 22 properties that we're asking council to allow us to go in and abate the weeds. This program's extremely important to both the fire department and the community. As we were just reminded a couple months ago, I believe three months ago, with a small vegetation fire we had over in South Hills, again, it's extremely important to us. With the lack of rain we've received this year, the weeds, grass are extremely dry, extremely flammable, and provide a huge fire hazard for us. Again, this program is extremely important to the mitigation of brush fires and to provide a reasonable amount of fire and life safety to the community. That's why I'm here this evening, to ask council to conduct this public hearing, to hear any protest from the citizens regarding abating any of these properties, or hear any concerns from the community on the way we're moving forward with the program. That concludes my staff report. I'll answer any questions. And real quick, I just want to throw in there, as of two weeks ago, all 22 properties, we have 100% compliance right now. And I'm extremely proud of that because, you know, with these tough economic times, there's kind of three things I'll chalk that up to you. The first is the willingness of the community to do the right thing, to work with both the city and the fire department to abate these properties. The professionalism of city hall, they take a lot of phone calls, they answer a lot of questions we have, they direct them to the fire chief, and the expertise of the fire department. We really do strive hard to get that. And here we are the night of the public hearing, and because of repetitiveness, we've done this so many years, we actually have 100% compliance. And so again, I just wanted to throw that in, because I'm extremely proud of that, because with economic times, it's nice that we can all work together and get this done.
Thank you very much. Questions? Councilmember Tui?
I'm confused at if they're in compliance.
What it is, we have the offenders that we have over the years, we've got 22 properties that, when they don't abate the weeds, we've arranged it to, if they, we give them 28 days to abate those weeds. If they do not do it, the city will come in, we'll abate them for them, and then we put on the taxes for that property. Throughout the years, city hall, city manager, myself, we've walked, talked, photographed, videotaped, hiked through the city with these property owners, and we've been able to, now folks know, hey, it's that time of year, we need to start working on it. This is just a process we do to make sure if we have any questions or concerns, that we have the authority to go back and abate that property for them.
I understand, but if they're in compliance, why are we having a hearing and having a weed abatement roll if they've taken care of it, the 22 that are on the agenda?
Because probably in 30 days, we'll have more weeds. They'll go from three inches to three feet, and then we'll have a whole nother situation. And so instead of coming back every three months, we do it for a six-month program and move forward.
So you anticipate violations, and we're putting them on the roll for someone who's in compliance right now, but you anticipate they may be in violation six weeks from now, so you're violating them ahead of time?
We're not violating. Alls we're doing is we're asking council to accept this, the people we've had concerns with before of abating those weeds. So this way, throughout the rest of the year, if we have any concerns, we can move forward with that. So we're truly, we're, again, we meet with them, we let them know that, hey, the annual weed abatement program's coming up, and when the folks receive the city clerk's letter, they've actually already, the majority of them, they're all 100% right now, have all done that.
I, that answer, I don't understand your answer, but no problem.
I apologize.
Mayor Protim Herbert, do you have a question?
Well, I was kind of had the same line of thinking. I thought that these people would have had a certain amount of growth, and then we would go out there and, you know, we'd have the public hearing, then go out and disk the property. But it sounds like these are annual offenders that we have on a list, and we just, every year, you know, do a public hearing because we anticipate they're going to have problems. Is that the way the system works?
No, I apologize. Part of this, we went out, we photographed the violations that we had, and then we start the abatement program. So before that, prior, we addressed all 22 properties. We went out, we photographed, we've got documentation showing the violation, and then we start the process. But the city clerk's letter, putting the notice out there, that's usually when folks receive that, they usually move forward, and so we've been able to cut that down. In the last three years I've been doing it, I believe we're down to maybe one or two properties we'll have any concerns with. And this year, as of right now, we don't have any concerns.
So on the public hearing tonight, what are you asking us to do? If they've already complied, we're not going to put a lien on their property, right?
Correct.
You will not put a lien on the property, but as I understand it, that because there were a problem at the time the report was prepared, that's why it came to council, and some of these lots have been continual problems throughout the year that you have to remind
Correct.
the same owners to continue to maintain that property.
Correct.
So they're recurrent.
Yes, and I apologize if I didn't explain that properly.
Recurrent problems.
Okay.
The other thing that I would like to see in the future is how much each parcel is being assessed.
Okay, it's assessed, whatever the cost of the abatement is, plus 130% for the administrative costs.
Okay. So if it's a bigger parcel, we're going to
Correct.
assess some more money. Okay. I'll look forward to the public's comment.
Okay, Councilman Lee?
So this is for the year?
Correct.
Correct. So what we're approving tonight means if you have to do a separate, whatever it is, dicing or whatever?
Dicing, correct.
Dicing, that's, if they don't... Dicing, that's, if they don't take care of it later on, this will let you, or allow you to go out and do it.
Correct.
Throughout the year.
And I think the preference is to let the property owner take care of the problem. We don't want to really do it ourselves, but this is just in the event that they do not comply within a timely manner, that they're given proper notice. If they're not complying, then you go in there and take care of the problem.
So we're not doing anything to them now? I mean...
Correct.
Okay.
Unless there's a violation?
Yes.
It's great that there's...
We're just meeting and speaking with them, and again, we work with them quite a bit.
Right, you try and give them every opportunity to resolve the problem.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions?
Well, it just, you look at some of the names on here, United Methodist Church of West Covina, Southern California Edison, South Hills Country Club. If this is what we, these are the annual offenders, every year, somebody needs to talk to them. I'll talk to Southern California Edison. I mean, they need to be good stewards, and that's ridiculous. And then I look at Carol and Diane Moyer, I look across at their house all the time, and I'm not quite sure what their violation is, but I'd like to find out. So, anyway, it's just, a lot of these are trusts or businesses, and the one that I don't see on here, which to me is one of the greatest offenders, is right below target. That thing is, we, they mow it, and it comes back, and mow it and come back, and I don't, you know, but anyway, just commentary.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have, Madam City Clerk, have you received any written protests or objections to performing the work we do not have? And then have been refused, and no written protests have been received, so we will continue and open, now I open the public hearing, and I do have a speaker card, which, if there's any in the audience wishes to speak, and Norman Richmond, please come forward.
Members of the city council, thank you. My name is Norman Richmond. I reside at 3432 East Cortez Street. I am the, I am in the thing here, H511. I need to refute the discussion that we just had with the weed control officer. In previous years, previous years, in April or May, I would get this kind of a letter saying, the rains are just about over, you have weeds, if you don't get rid of them, we will take them. So this letter, I did not get one this year. But I did have weeds three and four foot tall. The third of my property facing the street is unnatural, and as such, the weeds grew three to four foot tall. On June 8th, without any notice from the weed, I had them all cut down, all the debris removed. That's the way it is today. Now, since then, there have been some additional rains, and so there is some minor growth, very minor. Certainly, if the, if they have video or something, I would like to see it, and I'll compare it with the photos that I took yesterday. So, and I did, when I did get the letter, I did call and say that all the weeds have been removed. That takes care of that. I have three more items here I'd like to talk to. On H512, the name of the property owner is William and Violet Cowell. Mr. Cowell, William Cowell, died about 30 years ago. Violet Cowell left the property about five years ago. It has been under different ownership since then. The records need to be changed. Two, I don't know where the weeds are that they have found. It must be where, I can't see it from the street, that's a private, that's a private road behind there, and maybe the fire department can go there, I can't. So if there is there, then that's, that's why, that's correct. If you want to look at weeds right up front, look at what is now 3519, that's a vacant lot with a fence in the front. The upper part has been cleared, but right down at the street, the weeds are two and three foot tall, right up against the fence. I don't see that mentioned in here. I am, the very first item, H421, Temple Amish Om. I'm a member of that temple. I would like to know where the weeds are that they have found. If they, if they found, I was there yesterday, and I really didn't see any, and so if they do have some, I'd like to know so we can take care of that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Just one question. When you called in and said that you'd taken care of your weeds, but you were, you were given this notice, what did they tell you?
They didn't say anything. They said they'll pass the information along.
Okay.
Okay. I have no other speaker cards. At this time, there's no one else that would like to speak in reference to this, and no further protests or questions. We will close the public portion and entertain a motion or discussion in reference to the rubbish on the, well, no, resolution. Councilmember Tui?
I have a deep concern, I will not be supporting this tonight. When someone tells me they're in violation, that's because someone wrote a bad check once, or someone sped once, doesn't mean we should mail them an annual or a monthly ticket, or put them on a list that they have violated in the past, but they're not violating it now. To me, this is very questionable, if you're gonna publicly disclose people's names when they're not in violation, that, to me, is this not right? Like I said, two of them are churches, one of them's the golf course in our city, and the other one's a utility, and there's many other individual ones. I'm this shocked, but I'm saying, if they're in compliance, we should only do weed abatement when we have an issue, we've sent notice, and they haven't complied, just to put someone's name out there, because people have had something in the past, there may have been a reason why they had something in the past. And to have names that are no longer on the property, how many of these names here are current registered property owners, since Norm's telling us that the person that's near him, one of his neighbors, is no longer there? How many other ones? I can tell you, you're gonna get a low compliance ratio if you mail it to someone who's no longer alive or no longer owns the property. You're gonna get a very low, you know, if I get mail from someone that used to live there in my home, even though the guy may be sitting next to me, I throw it away. Just kidding, Steve.[1285.88][1285.88](laughter) I bought his house 50 years ago.
I wasn't even listening.
It was a joke. Thanks, I appreciate that even more. But it's okay. It says everything right there. But now, I'm concerned when the list may not be valid, too. That's very unfair and disingenuous of a governmental agency to put out notices assuming you're gonna be in violation.
Okay, I want to just remind staff, I guess we have a note on this 3428 Cortez, to check into that property owner, to check into 3519 Cortez on the vacant lot, to find out the property owner of that, so that they can just resolve the weeds. I believe that the temple has, is in compliance, because you're saying all of them are in compliance. So I guess, I kind of, I understand what Councilmember Tui's saying from my seat, I think maybe we can discuss a different process that may work, so we're not putting out the names just every, you know, so often we can check, or I don't know, maybe the city manager, we could bring this back, if it's okay with council, to just have a different process.
I guess I might ask a question. Jason, is there a deadline on this one? Is there a deadline on this resolution?
There is a, so we can...
I mean, can it be rolled over to the next meeting, to October 5th?
If you'd like to.
Okay, can we hold this over, so I can look more into the questions that you've asked?
Okay, if that's okay with the council, I think that might be a good direction. Just, I mean, I don't think we're, any of us are saying we don't want people to have to pay for, if we're gonna be their weed abating company if they're not responsive, but it's great to have the responsiveness, and I think because of the consistency in the past, so I understand what you're doing, but it sounds like some of the council have concerns just publicizing some names, even, you know, a resident coming down here going, I'm in compliance, I didn't do anything wrong, and I, you know, that's, you know, probably hard for somebody. So, and I know how weeds are, I have a large property myself, and I think I spend more money landscaping, you know, having it cleaned all the time. So if that's acceptable to the council, to have that brought back, I would entertain a motion for that.
Madam Mayor, if I can interject, if the council is inclined to continue the matter, I would recommend reopening the public hearing, and that way, if one is brought back, it won't have to be re-noticed for a public hearing.
Okay. All right, so I can go ahead and do that at this time, Mr. City Attorney, to reopen the public hearing, and ask for any council discussion or motion. Councilwoman Lane, did you have a comment?
I was just thinking, yeah, it's probably a good idea to bring it back, because if some people are in compliance, there might be other people that are out there that are not in compliance, that aren't on the list, so I guess some of my questions for staff would be, how do we, how do we add them later if we've already just put these people who are in compliance?
So I think bringing it back, a motion? Do I have a...
Well, yeah, and there's something wrong here, and Chief, you can come up and address why we're doing this so late in the year. I mean, this is almost October, by the time you would disk these things after this public hearing, you know, the winter season's starting. We usually do this in the springtime.
Right, and because we did have a large amount of rain this past winter and into the early spring, the weeds actually didn't grow in time for what we would consider the fall cycle to do the, do the weed abatement. So we, we worked with the residents to get the weeds abated, and this actually is in anticipation of, you know, next spring. So...
Well, then, I might vote against this on that statement. I mean, you are, you're asking us to entertain a motion authorizing the fire department to order the abatement of weeds, removal of rubbish on the, on these properties, and I forget, Jason said that they were all in compliance.
Right. This is mainly based on past performance. It's been, this has been our annual...
So you're just basically saying they're gonna violate it again next year, right?
Correct.
Well, then why don't you bring it back next year?
We can certainly do that.
I mean, doesn't that make sense? I mean, I don't, I don't know why we would do it this, this year. I mean, I just...
Some communities do it twice a year. They do it spring and fall, and since we skipped the spring session, you know, because things were mostly in compliance when we checked them in the spring, we opted to go with the fall.
Councilmember Tui?
I think the question is, since, you might as well put every city property on the list, because what happens if someone knew, like we said, I think Councilwoman Lane brought it up, is a violation, but she, they're not a repetitive one, so we just go ahead and skip over those.
We don't skip those. We just don't have them on the tax roll for that time to do the abatement. We'll try and work with them and do the abatement. If we don't get compliance, we will do it, and we will bill them, but it won't be part of the tax. There'll be a direct bill from the department.
How can you tax someone, saying that? I even have deep concerns. You're saying you have the ability to tax when there's no violation, you just want an open-ended ability to go after someone's property or, or lean someone's property when there's not a violation. That's what, you just want an open-ended agreement. Is that what you're asking for tonight?
That's, that is the process, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you very much. Okay, with that, council's, council's, Mr. City Attorney? I have a resident that wants...
Yeah, I think it's appropriate to go ahead and take action on it. There will be an opportunity to speak at the next meeting.
Well, if we continue.
If you continue it, if you're inclined to accept further testimony right now, that's fine, too.
Council's pleasure.
Well, I'm gonna continue it because it's, you know, it's a safety issue, but I have a lot of concerns. Number one, we've got budget problems in the city, and to, to do this process two and three times, you know, and the fairness factor comes into play. I mean, what if the guy mows the weeds in the springtime, you know? And some of these people that you say are repeat offenders, I do know them, and, you know, they're good people, and I don't, I'm not buying it, but I'll take a continuation, because it's a public safety issue.
Okay, any other comments? Is that a motion?
A motion to continue this, yes.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to continue, to have it brought back with the information discussed here. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Was that a four? Michael?
Yeah, I'll bring, I'll vote no then.
Okay.
It's okay.
I just was getting something for the city clerk, thinking of you. Okay, with that, I believe we are the items I2, in reference to, okay, that, that one was held, but we do have another one, I1, from Councilmember Hernandez. Councilmember Tui, do you want to take over that, if that's okay?
I have no problem bringing proposition 23 back to the next council meeting, so Mother May I?
Okay.